All right, we're gonna call the regular school board meeting to order for Tuesday, August the 6th, 2024 at 3:31 PM. We're gonna ask Mr. David Buckles if he will lead us in the pledge, and then I will do the invocation, and we will take care of the business before us.
All rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of your son Jesus, we pause right now to say thank you. Thank you for your blessings. Thank you for this great country. Thank you, God, for this district that we serve. Father, we thank you for the successes that we have experienced through our teachers' hard work. Father, we just bless your name, and we thank you for keeping them safe over the summer, and now they've returned excited. God, we also thank you for those that have come at the end of their service to our children and our retiring. We pray that you will bless them with a great retirement, and we want them to know how much we appreciate and love what they have done. Now, God, we are looking forward to a great year with great anticipation. We have goals set. We have people in place, God, and we're just going to do what we have been called to do, and that's to educate our children, to serve this community, and give them every opportunity possible to help them to soar with eagles. Now, bless us that as we go through the agenda and the things that we discuss so that our constituents, our stakeholders, our parents, everyone will understand what is at hand. We ask all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, at this time, we will have Mrs. Wagner is going to be joining us.
By telephone.
Okay, by telephone. Okay, all righty. Mrs. Wagner, good afternoon to you. Don't overdo it. Just take it easy and do what your doctor says for you to do.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All righty. At this time, we will have our presentations, our retiree recognition by Mrs. Whitehurst, following that Cognia accreditation and STEM certification, and then Camp Common Ground by Mrs. Drew, Diana Drew, in that order.
You think they ought to turn these lights on?
It feels dark.
Oh, he's got her.
It feels dark.
Yes.
Hey, when I go back there, I'll work on it.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
We are here today. We have two retirees that we would like to recognize. First, we would like to recognize one of our CTE teachers, Mr. David Garrison from Palatka Junior Senior High School. He has been one of our auto mechanics teachers for the last eight years. He has a total years of service with FRS of 24 years. So, Mr. Garrison?
Do we have to let him go?
Yes, sir, we do.
And then our second honoree today is a teacher who has served at a few of our schools, most recently at Palatka Junior Senior High School, Ms. Lenora Earls, and she's been with Putnam for 24 and a half years, but total years of service, 32.5. Ms. Earls.
I can walk so I know.
That's how you used to walk across the plate when you'd hit a home run playing softball.
Lenora, congratulations.
We used to work together at Jenkins back in the day. Thank you. One of those ought to work.
Good. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all need more lights on.
They may have one in circuit or other.
Okay, I can't. I can't. Sorry.
They may be able to set a pre-set a.
Something David did, I don't know what. They turned it off during the whatever they were doing.
No, I think it blew the circuit.
When we saw that.
Okay.
I guess that was it.
There it is. Thank you, Jonathan. They call them switches. That's good STEM training there, yeah.
All right.
Yes, ma'am. We're ready.
Well, I want to thank you for letting us appear before you earlier today in a workshop, and now today in the board presentation. I'd like to ask Andy Martinez, please. He is with Cognia. He is the director of the Southeast Region, and he is here today to celebrate with us our district accreditation. And I have some slides, but I'm gonna let Andy talk first, because he'll probably cover what's already in my slides.
Well, I'm sure you're gonna be very thorough. So, again, thank you for having me, and again, Andy Martinez, State Director with Florida and Cognia. Again, Dr. Surancy, it is a pleasure to be here with you and your board today. I just have a couple of prepared statements for you, so. Cognia has a long history with Putnam County, specifically dating back many years, but our strengthening our relationship happened in 2008 when you became a system-accredited school district, which, again, is not something that is very easily accomplished. So, we want to say congratulations on that. But the commitment is shown in your positive culture, supportive learning environments, and your comprehensive initiatives to establish clear, achievable, strategic plans to guide your district through our continuous improvement journey. The continuous improvement journey, again, it is not a checklist. It truly is a process. So, we like to take into consideration the fact that it takes a team. And again, the team was led by Rick Surancy, of course, and accreditation from Cognia is valuable mark of distinction that helps your students because it is recognized around the globe. Right now, we are in 95 different countries. We have a little over 42,000 members around the world, which actually is closer to about 4.5 million teachers in our Cognia membership. Cognia's accreditation to the point I made before is not a checklist. It is not a quick endeavor. It is actually a five. Well, now, it's a six-year endeavor that takes place on your continuous education journey. Putnam County School District began their journey, which was a rigorous external audit. We are a third-party vendor that comes in, and we take a look at all aspects. We have 30 standards that we live by, and to get to the point where you are today, that means you excelled, if not at all of them, at a very high percentage of them. This great accomplishment emphasizes the importance of the student-first approach that you have, that this board and this district has for their students. It is a collaborative leadership skills of Dr. Surancy and the board while highlighting their steadfast commitment to Putnam County School students and their success. The district leadership accreditation team was led by Lauren France and consisted of a team of leaders from across the district and gathered that synthesized district information to craft the final report that was presented to Cognia worldwide. The Cognia team was very impressed by the overwhelming amount of evidences and its unequivocally supports the Putnam District accreditation. I am humbled and honored to be here today to represent Cognia. We are the largest educational improvement organization in the world, and we love the fact that we get to have partnerships with individuals like yourselves and specifically a district like yours. So, from the bottom of our hearts, congratulations, Dr. Surancy, school board, family, and friends, that this is quite an accomplishment. And not only did you accomplish a district-wide accreditation, you also did a district-wide STEM certification, which is something that has only been done in Cognia for the last several years, and you passed with flying colors. So, it is my honor to present both certificates to you today. Would you like me to do that now?
Yes.
They're quite heavy, so if somebody wants to come help me.
This is for my friend.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you. Wow. That's really been mentioned. If I may. Thank you very much, my friend. And this is for STEM as well.
There we go. STEM, that's her. And thanks to all our staff. Laura, thank you for heading it up.
Jonathan, y'all get in there. Mikey, get in there.
Oh, please, please, I'll stand on the outside. You guys are the war ones.
Stay in our picture.
I'm just busy.
There we go. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're a good friend.
Anytime, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it.
So, I think Andy said it better than I can. So, we earlier had a workshop today, and I just want to put on record, our journey did start in 2008 as a district with accreditation. I'm gonna flip over these first couple of slides. I do wanna go back into, and over the last three accreditation journeys, we have increased our score. This year, we are at 335 points out of 400. The Cognia network average is 253, so we have a high level of success with our IEQ score. And with that 333, we actually will go back to where we are at the above or the third level, which means that we will do a, like a progress monitoring at the third year. Our STEM certification, which we are very excited about, we are the first district in the state of Florida, public school district in the state of Florida, to have every one of our school districts, school systems, school, period, thank you, just schools, certified. And we have these beautiful plaques and these great certificates, but each school will also get one for themselves that has their school listed for the STEM and for the accreditation. So, we are super, super proud. We have the 335 for the accreditation. Our STEM certification recommendation came in as our score of 305. You needed a 3.5. You had to have a 2.7 to become STEM certified. So, we have some next steps. Space Florida, we were with them this last week and signed an MOU with 20.
23 total.
23 total districts as being part of the Space Florida initiative, where we are making sure that our students have career pathways that lead to the space industry. And so, we are very proud to be PCSD.
I wanna thank Laura because, you know, in the past, we've gone through these accreditations. I've actually been on accreditation teams back decades ago where we would visit schools and all that. But now, the process is we gather evidence, and both for the STEM and the regular accreditation. And that's a very complex system, and I know Laura specifically has spent hours and hours, and Jonathan and their teams collecting that, and Mikey with STEM. So, I think all credit goes to you guys for doing that, and I can't be more proud of our district. But again, thank you guys for taking the lead and doing that.
There are many different people who are part of this process, and so, yes, thank you to federal programs who did the STEM certification and all of the evidence they collected from each and every school, and we couldn't do it without Jonathan Hinke and Strategic Initiatives, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Andy, thank you again for being here today, okay? Appreciate you. Good friend.
Good afternoon. How is everybody?
Doing good.
If it's okay, I'm gonna jump over here to this short presentation, and then we'll jump backward to Camp Common Ground. I think you've noticed I have a visitor with me or a friend with me today, and I can bring her out in just a minute. A few of you.
A visitor is actually one of our team.
She is.
She is, excuse me.
She is a team member. Oh, thank you, Mr. McDaniel. I'm here today to do a little bit of celebrating, a little bragging on her, and talk about what is gonna be part of our future here in our school system. So, positive impact. This is Jazzy, and she is our first Putnam County School District therapy dog ever, so we're really proud about that. She and I are a team, so we had to go through extensive training together, which I'll talk about here in just a moment. So, a little bit about her and why we're doing this. So, a lot of districts have therapy dogs. We have never had one in the past, but it's been something I've kinda dreamed of doing for several years. When I was a principal at Jenkins Middle School, I started really getting serious about thinking about it and starting to kinda research it. So, fast forward, what, three years from Jenkins, and here we are with Jazzy. And obviously, there are a lot of benefits to having therapy dogs in schools. They provide a lot of emotional support to kids. They help kids manage emotions. If they've gone through something traumatic, she can spend time with them and distract them and, you know, just make them feel better. Just petting a therapy dog does things to you physiologically that calm you down and just gets you in a better state of mind. So, overall, if you think about our strategic plan, it talks about whole child. This goes right along with that strategic plan that we have in the district with whole child, and it also fosters an inclusive school environment. I'm not gonna read all of these, but you can see some of the different positive benefits of therapy dogs. These are some things that, the one on the left, I actually borrowed from a UK website, and then there's an article on the right that if anybody would like to read through that, I'll be glad to share that with you. But it just talks about all the great things that it can do, or a therapy dog can do. It can provide less stressful environments. It can just boost your mood. My shirt says that. Today's Good Mood is sponsored by Jazzy. And even kids can sit and read with her and read to her, and that helps them with their fluency and their comprehension. It gets them kind of in a better state of mind to think and relax and do their reading, and it reduces negative behaviors. You know, maybe some, there's some children that have some aggressive behaviors, or, you know, they don't know how to treat another person in their class. All of those are things that not only just petting her and spending time with her, when I get to go spend time with these kids, we can have discussions around that. So, a lot of good positive benefits to it. These are just some pictures. You'll notice, right now, I only have one picture, and that's my daughter in that picture with children, only the one picture, and that's because until she got certified, I could not take her into schools and get pictures. But now that she's certified, I have one more step, and then I can actually have her with the children, and I'll explain that in just a moment. There's a couple of pictures of us doing some of the training that she went through, and then there's some pictures from the New Teacher Institute. There's a picture from Browning Pierce Elementary, where I would take the opportunity on planning days to go spend an hour here at this school or an hour at this school, because it gets her used to the environment and meeting people and being socialized. So, I was talking about the different training. She's gone through extensive training. She's gone through AKC Star Puppy training and testing. The next level up from that is K-9 Good Citizen, which she passed. Right now, she is in, I didn't put this up there because it's not completed, but we're in Community K-9 right now. We're in a hold on that one because our trainer's wife is sick right now, so I'm giving them time to get her healed, and then we'll get back to that. It's not necessary to have all of those pieces for her to be certified, but I thought it would be the responsible thing to do and to make sure that she was socialized and had the right temperament to do this job. So, as of the last Friday, we went to a nursing home, an assisted living facility, and went to the memory unit, and that was her last step in evaluation. So, she has passed all of her evaluations, and she is now certified through the Alliance of Therapy Dogs, and this process has taken me about a year, and we're just really excited. ATD is a nationally recognized organization, and the way that works is she's covered under their insurance when I volunteer. So, if I go to a hospital or a nursing home, she's covered there. But when I use her in a school setting, I'm the employee. So, what I have to do, and this is one of my next steps, is secure additional liability insurance, and I already know where I'm gonna be getting that from. And then, very soon, I'd say in the next couple of weeks, you'll see some policy that will be in board docs for you to review, and once that additional insurance and the policy are in place, we are ready to go. So, I'm super, super excited about this opportunity. I wanna thank Seminole Electric. They did give me a generous donation of $1,500. Each time she started training, it was $200, which is really very, very reasonable because of the people that I got connected with here in Putnam County. And so, that money has paid for training. It's paid for training equipment. It's paying for her recurring membership fees and her recurring liability. Oops, I don't know what happened there. I don't wanna restart it, but it's paying for all of those things. Some of those costs will be recurring. So, I will also, just shameless plug here, if you know anybody that would like to donate to the therapy dog program, I have an account set up, and it pays for those types of things. I can do little trading cards with the kids. I can bring things, you know, to use with the kids as little prizes or whatever as we're working together and doing therapy, and I'm sure other things will pop up along the way. But those recurring expenses is something that I wanna make sure that I'm covered on. Any questions?
Yes. Mrs. Drew, so Jazzy lives with you?
She is mine. I got her when she was five months old in a rehoming situation, and she wasn't from a bad situation. It was just a family that was having some medical situations going on, and they felt like that they just couldn't handle the expenses and the time. They didn't have the time to spend with her because they were working on some medical situations. So, she is mine 100%.
Okay. And so, the school will contact you if there's been a situation wherein a child may have experienced some type of trauma?
Trauma.
And you will go there to that school, or you're gonna have a rotation where you just go and visit all the schools, or you haven't gotten?
We haven't figured all of that out yet, but I do know a couple of things. Number one, I'm gonna start with individual visits and then small group, and then as long as I know that she's comfortable with that, because with therapy dogs, you don't ever push them into anything they're not comfortable with.
Right.
So, if she's comfortable with individuals and small groups, which I feel 100% she will be, then I can take her into classrooms, and of course, there's parental consent involved.
We also have Kim Simmons here, who's our lead therapist with the school district. And Kim, I don't know if you have anything to add or anything, but I think this is all part of what you do, right?
Yeah, no, I think it's an awesome addition.
You mind coming up for just a minute? Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, it's an awesome addition to what we're already doing, and I think, you know, in addition to what Ms. Drew has talked about, she will also be a good candidate for when we have students who have behavioral issues that need a little bit of positive reinforcement or rewarding. So, that's another thing that will be great. But yeah, I mean, mental health-wise, I think it's gonna be a great impact for our students positively, and I think they'll be excited about it. I mean, who's not gonna be, you know, excited about getting to see the puppy, so.
Well, I remember watching you hugging on Dear Honey Dog years ago.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And, you know, kids who may even have a fear. This is a good, we like to call it exposure therapy, right? This'll be a good thing, too.
Mr. Larry has a question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a wonderful thing. I just, you know, do you plan to expand the program at some time? Because the number of kids I can just see, and one of my granddaughter starts kindergarten next week, and, you know, you could probably go to every kindergarten class and every elementary school we have and take it and relieve some of their tensions. But, I mean, I know it's a very involved process and expensive and that type of thing, but is there a plan to maybe, you know, have one in South Putnam and one in West Putnam?
So, that's a dream of mine to expand it. There's a guidance counselor at Interlochen Junior/Senior High School that is interested in doing this. I just wanna be very careful to take baby steps.
Right.
I think you have to be very careful about who is able to do this, and all of this will be figured out in policy. But at this point, with my experience, which is, I'm novice, I'm learning as I go, I'm a part of different groups where I get to ask questions and learn things, and I've had good mentors, but I feel like it needs to be, the handler needs to be somebody that can obviously be in and out of classrooms. So, you know, I'm thinking like behavioral persons, you know, it could be an administrator, it could be a guidance counselor. I just think we need to be very careful and vet who the people are. I mean, I know they're certified teachers, and yes, that's wonderful, but we need to make sure that as handlers, they're responsible and they can read their dog's behavior and read the kid's behavior and how everybody interacts to make sure it's 100% safe.
So, is that the breed they use, or do they use different breeds?
Therapy dogs can be anything. They can be purebred, they can be mutts. It's all about their temperament, 100% about their temperament. So, the guidance counselor at Interlochen Junior/Senior High School, her dog is just a puppy. They have to be a year old before they can even certify. So, she and I have started having conversations. We went out and had lunch together. We had a lot of discussion around it. So, I think it's just gonna be, you know, start one, get that one going, and then start another one and get that one going, as long as we're comfortable with the people that are doing it, so.
Well, I commend you for all the time you spend. I know it's been a long time and a lot of.
Lot of hours, lot, lot of hours.
Our kids are gonna benefit so much from that. Yeah, thank you.
I feel like they will, yeah. I'm really proud of her, too.
Can we get a photo?
Sure, we can see if so.
Amy?
Come on, give her the jazz.
Kim, come on up. Get in the photo.
Yeah, Kim, Kim used to love to sit on the tailgate and hug those dogs.
I thought, Diana, when we first got Jazzy, she could double as a dustmuff, too.
Another feeling sometimes.
Yeah. Maybe I could take a look. I'm sure.
She was posing.
You get your face on.
We had to close Travis Weaver up because he was making Jazzy bark all over.
I guess I don't need to leave my treats up here on the diet.
David might.
Yeah, I love dog treats.
Okay, let me.
I'm kidding.
See, F11, where are we at? Okay. All right, the next presentation, if I can have Trish and Mandy come up. Welcome, welcome.
Hi.
Oh, thank you. He's keeping me straight up here. I appreciate it.
Is Linda still with his own phone, or is he? Were we able to get her? That didn't work.
Okay, so this year, we were blessed to get to hold our Camp Common Ground again. This is our second annual Camp Common Ground, and I have a couple of people with me that were teachers, lead teacher and a teacher at the camp. So, Tricia Baker is here. She was our lead teacher that helped me plan everything. And Mandy Richardson is here, and she was one of our teachers, and this was her first year with us. So, we have just a few slides, and I wanted you to be able to hear from some of the teachers that were there, not just me. Like, we think it's great. We are in a big, big competition with STEM camp. Where's Mikey? We're always in competition with each other, like, how many kids are you getting, and how much fun did they have? We think our kids have more fun, but they're also beneficial, but it's just a fun little competition. And you'll have to tell me which ones you were gonna do.
Oh, it's okay. I just wanted to say real quick, this is my first year taking part in it, and I was a little nervous, but when I showed up for our training, it was so nice because there was teachers from all over the county, and everybody just really embraced each other and everybody's ideas. It wasn't, we've already, we did this last year, so no, we're not doing it. Like, oh, that sounds good, well, what about this? And we are spinning off of each other, coming up with great plans, and so, from the first moment, it was just like, yeah, I wanna do this. Before I left that day, I said, I haven't done it yet, mark me down for next year. And then, when the camp came around, it was just, it proved itself. So, the planning and togetherness with the people was very nice.
I agree. So, when we do camp, it has to be based on our resiliency standards. The state of Florida has a certain set, and they're displayed up here for you, a certain set of resiliency standards, and these are the things that we're supposed to spend time on at our camp. And everything up there, I think you would agree, are things that not all of our kids are coming to us with in the school setting. So, to us, it's important for us to make sure that kids leave with a little more tools in their pocket to persevere through things or, you know, problem solve. We got different opportunities to practice being gritty and figuring out not doing the dance thing, but.
Yeah, not the gritty.
Being gritty and making sure that, you know, they were treating each other with empathy.
So, I will touch base on that.
So when we do camp, it has to be based on our resiliency standards. The state of Florida has a certain set, and they're displayed up here for you, a certain set of resiliency standards. And these are the things that we're supposed to spend time on at our camp. And everything up there, I think you would agree, is, are things that not all of our kids are coming to us with in the school setting. So to us, it's important for us to make sure that kids leave with a little more tools in their pocket to persevere through things or, you know, problem solve. We got different opportunities to practice being gritty and figuring out not doing the dance thing, but-
Yeah, not the gritty.
Being gritty and making sure that, you know, they were treating each other with empathy.
So I will touch base on that, but one of the big things was building self-awareness and self-management. So I don't know if any of you have ever tried or seen anybody doing, making a tower out of spaghetti noodles and having only tape and-
Marshmallows.
Marshmallows. And make, seeing who could do it the highest. You had to work with your group, you had to figure it out. You only had so many sources to be able to build it. So one thing that they have to realize is, you can't tell your partner, like, well, that's not going to work. Like, and get mad. They have to self-regulate when those spaghetti, and if anybody has made spaghetti, you know that they break super easy. Then the marshmallow is like sticky nasty from the kids rolling it around and trying to build it. So just working together and solving those problems without us saying, hey, I think that you should do this this way. They have to figure it out. And it was, it's really nice to see them be able to do that, especially being in the classroom. Both of us teach third grade. It's hard to do. We have to focus so much on our benchmarks and all of the things that we need to do. So seeing them being able to use those-
And giving them some conversation pointers, too. Like, instead of saying, that's not going to work, what will work? What can we try? And just really showing them, it might fall down three times, but the fourth time, it might be the tallest in the room. And they really work to encourage each other, and even from team to team, walk around and kind of do the whole goldfish bowl thing and see, well, what are they doing? Okay, let's try that. But it's okay to share ideas. We don't, one person doesn't have to have all the ideas, but when we work together, things can just really work well.
It's amazing to see. Yeah.
So the camp was made possible by the Education Foundation of Putnam County. They work with us to write a grant that helps to fund the camp. So we appreciate all the people at the Education Foundation. And of course, our Putnam County Food Services, the school food services, they provide breakfast and lunch. And Feed the Need actually provided a snack bag that went home with every kid every day of the camp. So they had lots of snacks and food to take home to their family, their siblings, and for themselves. And we had a generous person that, I promise not to say their name, but they donated enough money to cover all of our kids and adults to get Sassy's Lemonade one day at the camp. So I know who you are, but I can't say your name. I'm going to honor your request, but she's an amazing person and she helped us out a lot. So I want to thank all of our people that made it possible. At our camp, we had 67 students, 12 staff members, seven guest speakers that came in and out, and over 25 high school volunteers. I want to talk about the kids. The high school volunteers were amazing. We had some that came in every day and stayed for the whole almost 10-hour day. And then the football team at Palacka High School, junior/senior high school, they sent kids over every day after conditioning. So those kids got up, went to conditioning, sweated for two hours or three hours, whatever their condition is. They did shower, I could tell, before they came. And then they spent time, I mean, really good quality time with our kids. They got there around lunchtime, so it was perfect. They got to go around, they had these little cards that were all themed, you know, like respect, and they got to go around and talk about these little talking points with all of our kids. And just seeing them sit down and have conversations with, not a phone, not a video monitor, no games, they were talking to each other and really mentoring the kids. I thought that was amazing.
And our kids were so excited to have them there. And then we would go, for my group, we went to recess after, and one day they came and they went to the gym with us and played basketball with them. And then the next day, they're like, where are the big boys? Are they going to come back? And it wasn't just the little boys, it was little girls, like, where are the big kids? Are they coming? I'm like, I think they're coming, hang on, let's look. So they were just really looking up to them and excited for them to be there.
And I'm sure they benefited them, too.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The big kids.
Definitely. So some of the activities that we completed during the four days was, there were daily resiliency lessons, teaching kids how to bounce back from things that they might not necessarily know that they are being resilient from. We did art for mindfulness, and of course, we don't have a lot of art in our curriculum and in our schools. So it was so amazing to see the kids take clay, they could do whatever they wanted to, and literally make some of the coolest things that you've ever seen. And it was kids that you just wouldn't even think would really be into it, but they loved digging in and doing all of that. They could draw, there was painting in art.
They made picture frames.
Picture frames. They, we all took pictures of them and they, in their individual classes, made the picture frame on the outside and decorated it. They did some rocks. Some people chose to do different of our standard and put the, what they wanted to grow on or work on, on the rock to take with them. We had mind-body connection, which is also PE. Grounding is a great technique to learn to help children to get into their feelings and to really feel what's around them if they have some behavior issues that's going on, the daily journals. We did have Clayful coaching, which was online. What was really neat about this specific program was, it was not AI. It was-
A real person.
A real person. A real coach was on the other side that they could type to and talk to them about anything. I know that my personal children that were at the camp really enjoyed that. And there might have been things that could be bothering them that might be so simple as-
Had a fight with my brother.
Yeah, I had a fight with my brother, or he's yelling at me. Just to be able to talk to somebody and get that out and be able to learn, like, okay, well, maybe they didn't mean to yell or whatever could be going on.
And that was one of the things they were very excited about with the Clayful, is having that coach. They're like, oh, I wonder if my coach is here today. And they would play little games, like Two Truths and a Lie. One of them shared about liking the Sanrio characters, and then the coach, like, knew about it, she's like, oh, my gosh, this is like my best friend. And they're like, we're going to do this all the way till the end of August, because that's how long they had to do it. But it was just neat to see them connect and then have one of my students who, she was so worried about spelling everything perfect and it just being just so. I'm like, you don't have to worry, they'll figure it out. But then she just, she wanted, I'm like, okay, I'll write it on a, you tell me, I'll write it on a post-it note until you're more comfortable, because she wanted it to be just so. But it was neat, them, seeing them do it their own way, some doing the journals.
So do they have the same, for Clayful, do they have the same coach anytime they would go on, or is it a different coach?
I don't know if it was the same or not.
They were assigned to the class.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Because we had to do it at different specific times so that they had the live coaches. So I'm pretty sure that it was assigned directly to that person.
Good.
And then we had the district guidance counselors who came and talked about empathy. South State Bank came for some money smarts because a lot of our kids don't know how to save.
Wants versus needs is what they did.
Yeah, you know, everybody wants all of these things, but get to it. The mental health counselors, we did baking for mindfulness. The older kids actually got to make biscuits from scratch, which was really cool because how many of us do that? I use this, or I just go buy it and put it in the oven. And then we also had the band director come for music for mindfulness and showing those instruments and all of those things. And he loves it because it was great exposure for him to get the kids that are going to middle school and high school interested more in music and how music can help us. So that's our crew that was there this year. We had a great, we're from everywhere. We had Kelly Smith, Brian Pierce-
James Long.
James Long. And I think, I think that was it.
That was another thing, as a teacher at this camp, it was just really neat to have students across the district in my class with me and see them, even though they might have been at three, four different schools, see them work together, encourage each other, not think twice about scooting their chair and sitting with someone that they just met. It was just, it just lifted me up, seeing them interact and engage and talk through things and just, it was just great.
These are some of our volunteers. We had QI Roberts. These were the kids that were there every day, all day, that volunteered their time.
Palacka High, too.
And Palacka High and even one from Crescent City. So they were just great volunteers, and we wanted to-
Did they get community service hours?
Yes, sir, they do.
Good.
Yes, sir.
You can just humor me for two minutes, we should just do pictures.
Great.
Thank you for allowing us to share.
Can you three join us down here for a photo?
Can Jazzy come back?
Yeah, it's not, it's not every day anymore you hear the word common ground, as polarized as America's become. It's very, very nice to hear that.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right. All right. She knows the name.
Jazzy.
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 Thank you, guys. Great job.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mike? All right, we have none. Okay, we are ready for the public hearing, D1. How would we, how would you want us to proceed with this?
Can we do one, one moment? Well, Madam Chair, I'll move adoption of amendment, amendments to policies 1242, 1281, 1362, 2210, 2271, 3242, 3281, 3362, 4242, 4281, 4362, 5410.01, 5517.01, 8330, 8405, and 9211, per the Neola Special Update and their recommendations.
Second.
Go ahead, second.
All right, it's a motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we adopt the amendments to the policies that were listed, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All right, are we going to do it by district or we just?
By district.
It has to be all the whole.
No, of course not.
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
She's not voting.
No.
She's not voting.
And district five?
Adopt.
Okay, all right. We're now ready for the consent agenda. We'll start with you, Mr. Leary.
Madam Chairman, I am good. I have nothing to pull.
I spent some time here this week, so I'm good.
Mrs. Pickens?
I also have nothing to pull.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda as printed, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. I'll be ready to vote. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Oppose's motion carries unanimously. We are now in emergency session.
Madam Chairman, I will move approval of L1, 24, 20, 24, 25 personnel allocations, change number six, 6.1 through 6.3, and the explanation is time-sensitive.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item L1, change number six, 6.1 through 6.3, and second by Mr. David Buckles. We're ready to vote. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
Madam Chair, I ask that we approve item, what is it? L2? Is that what the, L2? The Mental Health Assistant Allocation Plan justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item L2, the Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan, and second by Mr. David Buckles. We're ready to vote. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'll move approval of L3, new policy on the group insurance and internal services fund. And again, the explanation is the time sensitivity.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item L3, the new policy proposal for group insurance and internal services fund, and second by Mr. David Buckles. All right, are we ready to vote? Questions?
Oh, wait a minute. Can we, can we talk about this a second? I'm sorry, I was getting ahead of myself. So this, this is a policy that we discussed back in one of our workshops with the Insurance Committee on our trust fund for being self-insured. And after meeting with our insurance representatives last week, you know, they brought up the concern that that trust fund had been raided in the past, not by anybody here, after it was, had built up a significant amount of money, which is what we want, so that we don't, we can pay our, pay the claims and not have any impact on our general fund. So what they, what I recommended is that in order for that fund not to be raided or money taken out of it, is that a supermajority of the school board at that time, if it ever came up, would be required to do that. And so what this is, is recommending we develop a policy, and I'm happy to work with our board council in coming up with that policy to bring back to the board for final approval to assure that we, the continuity of that trust fund.
And, and that's the best way to do that, the supermajority?
Or, or, yeah, I mean, or unanimous.
We're here, let's, let's let Dawn explain that to us. I mean, you've-
Well, supermajority would just mean that you're, you're talking about not a simple majority of 3-2, but a supermajority would normally be 4-1, short of unanimous, but more than, more than a majority. So it is customarily utilized by various boards when there's some particularly significant issue that people want to, want to make sure that you have a consensus of the board to approve rather than a simple majority. So supermajorities are used.
And during the presentation by Mrs. Odom at that time on, you know, the, the district going to self-funded, you know, health insurance policy, she, she brought that concern up and she was here when that fund was raided and, you know, it created a lot of problems. So, you know, it's a protection mechanism, and I think that, you know, we're on the right track, going to self-insurance and then hopefully with our clinic that's soon to come online, we'll, we'll really be able to provide, you know, good healthcare, quality healthcare for, for our employees.
Let me ask you one more question, Mr. Holmes. Linda's not here to vote, but we don't really need a super, a majority to vote to have a majority.
Correct. You don't need a supermajority to approve the change.
That's the route we go.
Okay.
Okay. I would almost say, can it be unanimous?
It can be. I'm happy to do that.
I mean, I think all the protection, we give that fund, the better. I mean, I think all the protection we give that fund, the better.
Yeah, well, I, I have to, I have to agree with, with, with Mr. Leary in this, this is, you know, it's just probably the best route to go for the, for the, to protect the employees of Putnam County.
So now we need to determine.
A motion to direct our, our board council to.
But now, Mrs. Pickens said unanimous and.
I mean, if super majority is.
You know, in my experience, both staff, staffing and being on boards, that the super majority generally, if you got a super majority, you, you usually have an unanimous. Certainly been the case with us too for the last almost two years or so that I've been on the board.
So we've already had a motion and a second or no?
No.
I did, I made a second to, to discuss and, but now that the motion's out there, I think we're good to vote if we wanted to.
Mr. Leary made a motion.
Yeah, Phil made a motion to go to the super majority and I seconded that and.
Was that your motion?
Well, it was to, to draft a policy.
Oh, okay.
Draft policy, right.
Draft the policy to bring back for approval.
I seconded that idea for, you know, that, because I, I feel like Mr. Leary's on the right track there and, and I think the council will obviously be able to draft policy that would, would enable the district to work and, and function without rating that fund and only for use that would be approved by a super majority of the board.
Okay, so part of the policy would be super majority.
Yes, ma'am.
We're, okay, so we're ready to vote? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept item L4, Personnel allocations change number seven, 7.1 to 7.2, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item L4, Personnel allocation change number seven, 7.1 to 7.2. And second by Mr. David Buckles. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now out of the emergency session. We have no unfinished business, no new business. We are now ready for our reports from the board. We will start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to say a huge thank you to everyone involved in the district accreditation for the state and for our STEM accreditation. It's an honor to be a member of the board of the first school district in Florida, public school district in Florida, to get that accreditation. I'd also like to applaud the district for the decision to close yesterday. I know that that was hard because I, I know teachers already feel behind and that may have made them a day behind. But Mr. Campbell got right on Facebook and said it was a great time to do all your vector training. And I thought he is 100% correct. So I know that for myself, that's the earliest I've ever gotten vector training done. So Ms. Whitehurst, you don't have to call me. And I'm looking forward to, to a great school year. I have two, one wasn't a former student, but, but someone very close to Crescent City. And another student that are both novice teachers in our district this year. And I cannot tell you how happy they were with the novice program. One, one of the girls is coming from another neighboring county and she said, I know that I would not have felt as ready for this year in that county that she came from. So just thank you for all that group and Ms. Whitehurst and her leadership and, and the whole group that does that. And, you know, I'm looking forward to high school sports starting back up and getting into the schools again, so that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Buckles?
I really enjoyed the, the presentation today. It brought back good memories of, of when we, we first became an accredited school district back in 2008. That was a big, big deal for Putnam County. And this certainly is a, is a big thing today that helps our kids and our teachers and, and, you know, ensures them to have brighter future. Want to encourage Mr. Leary to let the board and superintendent know anything we can do in this upcoming year's legislative session to get you in touch with people in Tallahassee because we're gonna have a, a new state representative one way or the other.
And state senator.
Yeah, and we're going to need all the, all the representation we can get up there. And with that, I'll, I'll pass it on to Ms. Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mr. Leary?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman, and glad to have you back. And good to hear Ms. Wagner's voice. I'm, I'm glad she's on the road to recovery. I had the opportunity to attend the new teacher training reception. Got to go to the fun part. And it was, Toni and her staff did a fantastic job. I was very impressed by the teachers that, that I met and the principals were there. It was just a really good event. And shout out to all our, our business partners. I don't have, I can't name them all by, by memory, but we do have a lot of support in the community and that is, is, is really a good thing. School starts next week. I might be at Kelly Smith when my granddaughter comes just to see. But I'm excited about that. I've, I've talked to the high school principals and, you know, we're really looking for a good year and got some, some good, good things happening. So that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Just real quick, I, my, mine basically came from Palackahai Daily News because I've been away and, and to get back and see all the great things that's happening and the young men that got an opportunity to be a part of the Baker's Sporting Goods High School Football Media Day. I thought that was great and the exposure. And, and because how many athletes we see making all of these bucks and can't hold a conversation with someone when they stick the mic in their face. But anyway, also in the paper, one of our former students that graduated right here from Palackahai School, Lance Brahman. We were watching, my niece and I were watching the Olympics when the young man Lau, whatever his first name was, won. And he said Lance Brahman.
His coach.
And I said, what? I said, how, I said, it has to be him. It just has to be him. And then the paper came out with the beautiful article on him. And, because Teresa Brahman was one of our teachers. She worked with you at Jenkins, me at Kelly Smith. And his father, Ken Brahman, took, took our school to state championships. So, I mean, good things can come out of Putnam County, always have. Then to the young man that's a, a reader, I'm gonna call him a reader from, from Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences. A great article on that young man because all of the children in Putnam County are ours. And he was selected a national reader. That was great. And then the space program and you shared more of that today. There, there are very few stones that have not been turned over in Putnam County as far as education goes. We are exposing our children to some things that we, we didn't even dream of happening. Where Mikey, I think it was, said that becoming a pilot, for him, it was just voicing it. But today for our children, it, it's a reality. And it starts here with our teachers working hard and, and, and our administrative team here at the district office and, and the board members and the parents and, and, and teachers that just give their very best. And even when they feel like they have to retire, they may come back after years rest. But anyway, that being said, we'll pass it to you, Mr. Turney.
I have nothing.
All righty. Mrs. Superintendent?
Madam Chair, and I'll be brief, but congratulations to Ms. Whitehurst and Kristen Carroll for organizing the new teacher institute. That's got, that's gotten to be a, kind of a thing we look forward to every year. And our business partners are a huge support. And I was able to talk to, how many did we have, 45?
I think it was 42.
42, okay. But they, they were really enthusiastic and a lot of them were new to the county. But again, just the enthusiasm that came out of that will give them a big lift going into the year. Space Florida, we went down to Cape Canaveral last week and, you know, had a photo op and all that. But what a huge opportunity for our kids. And I can't, I just tell people, our kids are gonna be able to make space stuff that will be in space. And that's very cool. Our accreditation, thanks to Laura France and her team, Jonathan Hinky, and all of our STEM team, Mikey and Dr. Coleman that works their heart on gathering that evidence for STEM and our regular accreditation. So really, I know there's a lot of work involved, but thank you so much for doing that. Our staff, we went around and visited about half the schools today and talked to their faculties and they were on fire. They're ready to go. We gave them an extra day off yesterday. But it was, I think, needed. And, you know, the weather, we just did not want to take any chances to expose them to any harm at all. But there's just a lot of enthusiasm and they've hit the ground running. And some of them said they were able to get their vector training done yesterday. So it wasn't, wasn't a total waste.
Me too.
But I get a lot of, I get a lot of energy just from being around our teachers and our staff. So what a great thing to do. I want to thank, say thanks to Grace Fellowship. Right here in Palackahai, they're offering their, their gym or their, their center for our teachers. It's called Edify. And I believe we shifted that from today until tomorrow morning. And they get to go out there and they're gonna receive stuff. And really just another way to honor our teachers and all. And finally, our students are coming back Monday in case anybody didn't know. And I think there's a lot of parents out there that are happy about that, I think. And it's, I know our teachers are very enthusiastic. And we do, we do have August the 8th, I believe, will be a lot of our open houses and our, for our high schools, kids can go back and follow their schedules and so forth. So August 8th will be a big day. So back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the board?
Superintendent, Edify Breakfast is at Church of the Heights. Church of the Heights and Grace Fellowship are partnering, but it's actually located at Church of the Heights.
Thank you. Is it at Church of the Heights or at?
It's at Church of the Heights.
At their gymnasium.
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Whitehurst, off the top of your head, do you remember how many vacancies we have left as far as instructional staff? Just if, I heard 18.
No, we're less than 18.
I mean, I'm saying.
I would say 10 off the top of my head.
That's great because when, when we did the budget meeting, we were 18. So we, it's gonna, yes, we're closing it. All right, thank you so much. All right.
Thank you.